I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
All right. Can we see who we got? Anybody sign in? You two are already on there, so.
Yes, you did.
You're on there.
Yeah, that's what I did. I got away from it.
Are you called?
Well, that's just.
It's okay. We'll just do the great divide. Okay. This is a meeting, a regular session of the Lincoln County Commission on November 7th, 2019. Members President Darryl Baker, County Clerk Vicky Harless, and Commissioner Josh Fanks. Josh. Doc is not with us. He's absent tonight. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the last meeting that we had on October 3rd. Josh, the motion is put in. The motion I'll second that on figure out. Motion carries to approve last meeting's minutes. Okay, under public comment, we have J. O. Farm here with us. Do you want?
Yeah.
Just wherever you want.
Anywhere I want.
Anywhere you want.
I'm gonna get in the middle.
Oh, not there.
Um, everybody knows me. Do you know who I am? Okay. Um, I work, okay. I work through probation on the adult drug court probation officer for Boone County. I also work with Lincoln County. So, we just want to do a better job of communicating with you guys, giving you updates on some things that are going on, what we do. Um, when we get some new folks in here, I'm not sure everybody knows exactly what we do, and it's a wide scope of things that we cover. So, probably, I'll update you maybe every other month or something like that. I'd like to bring in another probation officer with me when I do that and let them tell you a little bit about what their job is, because there's several of us and we all do different things. So, that way you can just get an update so you know what's going on.
Is this Val LeFevre?
No. Well, they are with the Day Report Center and the Fresh Start Program.
Oh, okay.
And they're doing some real good things in our county.
So, you're with Val LeFevre?
Yes, ma'am. Um, and Rachel that I talked to you and Mary about is supposed to be on her way here. She's coming from Logan through Harts, and she's never been that way before, so.
She's from California.
Yeah, she's from California, so, yeah. She's not coming from there today. They're in a cultural. First off, um, from the probation department, we wanted to thank you guys for our new office space that you're working on.
We hope you thank us after your over.
Well, I mean, we're excited to get the space and to get, you know, sad to move out of courthouse, but at the same time, the department just keeps getting bigger and, you know, we're glad to be able to work with you guys and do that.
Now, when this gets finished, will you have some space over there?
I may or may not. Um, I've got an off, my office is in Boone County, and so I may or may not. I think at one point I had a space and then they had to crunch up something.
There's still a giant conference room.
Right.
I'm sure you could use it any time.
Listen, I can work over in that corner behind Darryl. It don't bother me. So, just giving you an update, we have 243 active cases in Lincoln County. That's anything from community for school to sex offenders, drug court, um, altogether 243 right now. That fluctuates daily.
Now, how many officers?
How many officers in Lincoln County?
How many is 243?
You're gonna make me count.
I think we already have counted the other day.
Does that count me?
I don't believe I counted.
Count me seven.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, with certain caseloads per state have to have a cap. So, like, for anyone who is supervising sex offenders, they're only allowed to supervise 15 clients. That is from a state probation level. A drug court, 20. Sometimes when we're close, 16, 21, 22, they'll let that slide. We have more drug court clients here, this is Rachel, than we do in Boone County, so because Matt's cap would be way over than I work in this county also. Uh, Judge Thompson also likes us to be in each other's county. That way we both know what's going on, because we're basically interchangeable. Another thing that we're doing is we're doing bond supervision now. So, the folks who are on bond, that are getting out on bond, probation's basically eating the cost on all that, supervising anybody on bond to help keep those folks out of jail. We're drug testing them, um, you know, making them come in and speak to us, doing different things, just to try to hold them accountable, you know, while they're waiting on a trial or something else. So, that's, that's one thing that we're trying to do to, to help keep costs down.
Are those counted in your numbers?
No. No, that's not, that's not counted in the 243. Um, and I think pretty much Elena's supervising all of those. And it's not as many as we thought it would be so far, but we think it'll be a start of one at some point, um, just because, um, there's gonna be more people that are wanting to get out on bond and they're gonna be supervised, and we can help facilitate that. Another thing that we are, that we're working on, that we're doing, is we're getting their paperwork to the jail ASAP to ensure that the inmates are going on the state bill and not the county bill.
Now, that's what we like.
Hey, we're, we're doing all we can, you know, I mean, um, it's funny, because when I, I speak in front of Boone County too, and they've operated with all this money for so long, and now they don't have it. So, they don't know what to do.
It's tough.
Right. And we're so much better for it. Over here. Um, our, our circuit also has maybe combined between, uh, the, that's Boone and Lincoln, 25th Circuit, between juvenile drug court and adult drug court, largest caseload in the state. It's real close. It fluctuates. Um, we were in Wyoming County Tuesday looking for a fella, and they had four drug court clients. Four. We have close to 40, um, in, in the two counties combined. We have 20, I think 24, 26 over here, something like that. So.
You said that's combined juvenile and adult?
Yes. Yeah, what, no, that, those numbers I gave you, that's just adult drug court.
Okay.
Um, if you combine those numbers together, it would probably be close to 70.
For just Lincoln?
For Lincoln and Boone. Yeah. Um, Lincoln's adult drug court has about 24 to 26, um, and we have, I think, 11 in Boone. Uh, in juvenile, we have a lot more juvenile drug court over here. Uh, the, a lot of that has to do with how these, uh, the prosecutor works, it's like the gatekeeper to get into these drug courts. Um, and they're a little more lenient in adult drug court over here than they are in Boone, and a little more restrictive over here on juvenile drug court than they are in Boone. So, um, but it's, it's, those folks are really supervised heavily. Um, we're talking, the adults are three to four drug screens minimum a week. Um, they're at the Day Report Center five, six days a week. Um, they are mand, they mandatory have to do drug screens on the weekends, at least one day on the weekend. Um, our Day Report Center, along with Boone, Mingo, and Logan are the only Day Report Centers in the state who are, um, a licensed behavioral health center also. There's none other in the state. So, we can offer a lot more than any other Day Report Center, one being anyone can come off the street, not have a conviction, not have any kind of a criminal charge, not be in any type of trouble, come in our Day Report Center and get help before they ever get into trouble. That's something you can't do in most other counties. Can't do that in Cal. Can't do that in all. Y'all have any questions for me?
How often do you, people graduate at different times, I guess, in the program?
Right.
Over, let's say, a year? Why do you think your graduation, or I guess people completing the whole program?
We just had a graduation for both counties. We do both counties for juveniles and, and adults, and between the two counties, we have 10 total. We usually have three graduations a year. So, it's usually anywhere from between five to 10. Program is supposed to be a min, well, it has to be, a minimum of a year long. Um, it's usually more like 12 to 18 months, sometimes over into 24. But we do, we have had, out of the folks, when I did this in Boone County, we had had in Boone County, we'd had 11 graduates in the year so far, and we've probably had about the same here, and we've not had any of those folks, um, get trouble and go back into the criminal justice system again. Yet.
Do you? No. Oh, well, thanks.
And we're actually getting ready to, we're having a meeting tomorrow in Logan, or in Boone, and we're incorporating a phase four. It's phase three now, a phase four, which is aftercare, which is mandatory for all people. They will stay within the day. Right now, they go back to regular probation. That's not gonna happen anymore. They're gonna stay under my watch or under Matt's watch, or if they're in juvenile drug court, under Travis Haves' watch, um, which is a lot better, because we know their tendencies. They know us, and we've been, we've kinda been that with a couple people on a trial run, and it seemed to work a whole lot better.
So, instead of going, when they finish drug court, instead of going onto the straight probation, they will go to this phase four?
Yeah. They'll actually, they'll complete the program, but, but the added phase four of the program will be the aftercare, so they won't complete drug court until they're after the aftercare part.
How long does it have to be?
Four months. Yeah.
So, then the thought is, maybe they wouldn't even have to be on probation anymore?
They won't. They'll be, they'll be cut free.
Is there, is there any screening in phase four?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, the way, the way the screening works in phase one and two, it's a minimum of three screens a week. They always get four because of the weekend. When they get to phase three, they go down to two days a week with a screen on the weekend. When they get into aftercare, they'll probably go down to one screen a week, um, with a possibility of an extra. Plus, we're always in the home, out in the field, out at their jobs, and we pop on the screens there surprised. So, you know, if somebody's on aftercare and they're at their house and they screened on Monday and they think they're good till the next Monday, we show up on Friday night, we screen them. Um, but we've, over the time, and I've done this about 10 years working with probation and the Day Report Center, um, we have found that if you don't reduce the screens, they become dependent upon those screens, and then when they drop off to nothing, they're like, what did? So, if, you know, it's kinda been like a trial and error basis, and that seems to be the best thing we've found so far.
Kind of swaying them all?
Yes. Right.
Now, when somebody's on phase three, pretty close to done, and they get in trouble, they start like a one all over again?
Not necessarily. It's according to, you know, what the issue is. Um, it's accord, you know, if somebody has relapsed, probably wouldn't do that. If they're, you know, if they catch a charge, they're gonna be kicked out of the program. But if they do something that's, you know, enough, a behavior, a big time behavioral issue, we may drop them back a phase. We may, um, increase their individual counseling. We may increase their classes. We may put them back through another class, you know, things like that. Where, we also are trying to start outsourcing them more into the community, like, before they can graduate, they, we require them to get their GED. We require them to have a job, a driver's license, all the things that have hindered them to not be successful. We try to set them up so they'll be successful, so when they leave, you know, and, and when they leave, they can still have our support. They can always have our support, and we'll help them when we can, but it sets them up for success, rather than just saying, "Well, you know, you did everything, you didn't fail any drug screens, you did the classes, good luck." You know, that, that doesn't work.
Thank you for coming to the panel.
No problem. Um, I'll try to come back about every other month, just to update you guys. Um, and if there's anything you need to know, you call me. Let me know. She knows how to get hold of me. Okay? Um, and I'll introduce you to Tyler and to Rachel and Ellie, and they're gonna talk about, a little bit about the Day Report and Fresh Start.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Ellie, you're up on the attention.
I'm not talking. I'm just here for, I mean, I will talk, but I won't.
Yeah, yeah. Can we have Ellie pass out goodies to everybody? Is that all right? Cool. So, one sec, everybody.
I'm the goodie pack. I don't want the boots on the ground kind of person.
Now, Ellie, we know you, but me talking is not our problem.
It's not. It's really not.
She said, "I'm not gonna talk," and then in the same breath, she said, "I'll probably go."
Yes. We'll let you talk anytime you want.
I know.
So, hi, y'all. We are representing Southwestern Regional Day Report Center. Uh, my name is Rachel Rubin. I'm the program development coordinator for the region, so that's Boone, Lincoln, Logan, and Mingo. Um, what I am doing is I'm doing, like, grant writing, data evaluation, program management, um, and just trying to make Day Report a little bit more accountable to public officials like yourselves and to the communities that we serve. Right? So, the, the host of materials that are in front of you, um, there's a handout that's just about what Lincoln County Day Report has done in the last month. Um, there's a sheet that's about Lincoln County's numbers, kinda overtime, um, how, how the county budget has steadily decreased, how jail spending has steadily increased, and then you read those numbers together, and you can generate, like, the percent of the county budget that is eaten away by the jail bill overtime. That's money that nobody wants to be spending on jail. Right? Like, we all have better things to be spending that money on. Um, and then the two other parts of that report, there's one that's a little bit more information just about Day Report, about the funding streams that we operate in, um, and just kinda how that works. And then there's another one that kinda covers the region as a whole. Um, and we found from this meeting that we recently held that there's kind of a great appetite with other county commissioners, um, some of our state delegates, and even the, the governor's general counsel, to really be ambitious about thinking about how we can solve this problem, um, how we can think about how to decrease our jail bills, um, and why investing in treatment might be a really natural extension of that. So, um, those are to peruse at your, at your leisure. Um, I mean, I guess the bad news is, we do have a lot to do in order to make a dent in the jail bill. Um, the good news is, folks at Day Report really wanna be invested in the solutions, and we're here to tell you a little bit more about, like, what we're already doing, because I don't know that, that has always been a strength of Day Report, right? It's reporting out. Um, we found going around to other county commissions that people are quite surprised to learn that we're now a licensed behavioral health center, and that anybody who's not on paper can come and access services, right? Um, so, so I guess I'll just, I guess I just wanna talk about this little half sheet there. Um, so this is just in the last month, um, that folks at Day Report have received, like, 145 hours of individual therapy. These are folks who are receiving, um, like, really specialized evidence-based treatment. Um, and these are people who are actively working on their recovery, right? They're, they're getting job training, um, they're having a lot of hours of GED studies, 78 hours in the last month, just in Lincoln County, um, and 564 hours of community service. That's a whole combination of things, but just for perspective, um, Lincoln County pays in less than $3,500 a month into Day Report, and to pay somebody just contract work, minimum wage, to do those numbers of hours of community service would've put you back almost $5,000 last month. Right? Um, so this middle part is about, right, anybody who walks into Day Report can receive this whole suite of services. Um, and they're receiving, like, when they're receiving services, they're working on their recovery, they're receiving individual counseling, they're investing in their communities, they're working on their education, and they're working towards becoming a productive member of society, right? All at a much lower cost to the county. So, this last number that I wanna draw your attention to, um, I'm sure you guys are very familiar with this 4825 figure, right? That is the bait of our existence here, like, why, if a person is booked for five minutes then to go on probation, are we still charged $48.25 for the day, for them to be just there, booked in the lobby, right? It makes no sense. Um, and so, and then we keep them there for a week, like, right, that adds up really, really quickly. Um, so, we did the math based on the number of clients that we're currently serving. Um, we're assuming that maybe 25% of them would be incarcerated for the number of days that they're receiving services at Day Report. Um, we didn't factor in, like, what the cost of providing all those other services are just in, like, number of hours per person per day, like, you're spending 60 cents per person per day, for a person to receive all of those services at Day Report, right? Um, the way we're able to do that is that Day Report pulls down almost $100,000 a month from federal and state resources to our region, and we're always looking to expand that. So, the last thing I wanna leave you with is kinda some good news, actually, is, like, new and emerging projects that we're working on. Um, so we just got a grant from the state level for recovery coaches. So, Ellie is one of our wonderful recovery coaches that we currently have operating. I don't know what we would do in Lincoln County without, like, the, the stamina and the passion that Ellie brings to our team, right? And we wanna be able to bring more people like her into the fold. So, with this grant, we'll be able to hire an additional recovery coach for each of our four counties, so we're part-time, 15 hours a week, and we'll be able to train 20 more coaches for free. Um, so, right now, the closest option is, if you get yourself to Charleston, you could pay $500 to be trained at Recovery Point. Transportation to Charleston is not cheap. $500 is not something that a lot of people have, just as a disposable income, ready to get more certifications. So, we could train people here in Hamlin to be providing services to folks here.
How many do you sign?
Uh, 20 people in the region, so at least five will be here. Yeah. Um, we got a, a grant with the Food and Farm Coalition. Basically, they were very excited about the program. Uh, Fresh Start, I'll have Tyler and Ellie talk a little bit more about that, um, and they just kinda were like, "Hey, Ellie, like, talk about your wish list, like, what would you imagine the best case scenario you get here?" And they wrote us, a grant for us, um, to the Greater Kanala Valley Foundation, and we got it. And so, we're all, for the next year, kinda be learning, um, doing some coworking with Cafe Appalachia. They wanna potentially franchise down here and, like, open up a pay-what-you-can cafe here in Hamlin, um, to employ people in recovery, to buy produce from local farmers, to give people, like, actual on-the-job training, and potentially be able to pay people in recovery.
Is that what's in South Charleston?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so that exact same model. And then the last thing is that we recently submitted a grant with the Health Department here for a quick response team. So, that would be, um, that's a team of an EMT, a recovery coach, and a sheriff's deputy that goes out in response to all overdoses in the county, uh, between 48 and 72 hours afterward. So, that's, like, if a person survives an overdose, it might be a prime time to engage them into treatment. Um, it's something that in Logan has really been a game changer in creating a lot more collaboration across departments and county government, um, and has kinda started to change hearts and minds, even with sheriff's deputies, about, like, what the utility of treatment is, right? Like, having a recovery coach there to talk to a person like a human and remind them that treatment is an option. Um, they've had us, let's see, 85% like, actual retention rate in, like, getting a first contact with people, that's a person who that has the phone number of a recovery coach, and they've gotten over 15% of people into treatment. So, that number hypothetically would've been zero otherwise. Um, and they're already being able to generate data, like, they have a heat map, right, of all the places they've gone out to on the QRT team, and so they can say with confidence, like, "We respond to million-dollar homes and trailers," right? Like, the, the face of addiction in our county is much more multifaceted. This is in Logan. Yeah. So, um, so Logan has been operating one for about five months now. They wrote the grant for, to, to respond to 50 overdoses in the first year. There are already over 100.
I think we beat them like the second week, maybe.
Right. Uh, so.
It was quick, yeah.
So, that's something, I mean, we talk about that a lot, especially in Lincoln County. That was one of the barriers to that grant, is, like, are people, are 911 operators recording overdoses correctly? Like, are they just saying unresponsive or cardiac arrest when it should be, in fact, overdose? Um, and are death certificates being signed that way? And so, should we be getting more money from the state and the federal government, because those statistics, even though they look really dramatic, actually aren't even fully, like, capturing the picture here? Things like a quick response team can aid in that, right? Like, we've talked to people after an overdose, and we've talked to far more people than that number says, like, something's wrong.
Now, Doc, Doc Banks had mentioned, Commissioner Banks probably said in the meeting, he'd said a couple meetings ago, in reference, uh, funding for the quick response team in Lincoln, and it's something that Judge Thompson talked about. I hadn't, I hadn't talked to him since, don't know if there's anything to follow up on that. Is there any?
So, I, I would actually have been the person that talked to Doc Banks, like, at, when he came to our last, like, board meeting. Um, I talked about the one in Logan, and he said, "We need that. That would be very helpful." Like, honestly, to some extent, in counties like Boone and Lincoln, it's really helpful to just have another source of income to keep a sheriff's deputy, to be quite frank. Right? And they're doing something incredibly valuable with their time. So, like, I'm more than happy to help facilitate those grants, and we were really lucky that Sam Suter at the Health Department, like, already kinda had the ball rolling. Um, Ellie helped facilitate a meeting between he and I, and I was able to just kinda present to him, like, "This is what we're doing in Logan. Let's talk about how we can adapt it for a county that has less, like, a smaller population and doesn't have a major hospital," so it's a lot more like information sharing.
Does Boone have quick response teams?
Not yet. Yeah.
One thing you mentioned, I wanna touch on, I'm the 911 director.
Okay.
I wrote a letter of support for the project, and I think it's very worthwhile. I've been associated with project places in other, in other counties. The, the one thing that, when I got ready to do the letter, I looked at the amount of overdoses we had, and then I removed the number from the letter, because I knew it wasn't reflective of what's truly going on. And, you know, I've worked as a paramedic for 15 years in the field, and one of the things that I found is, most people that call in overdoses, number one, don't tell the truth, and they've always, you, you get man down, unconscious, unresponsive, so the numbers, if you're looking for accurate numbers, don't go to 911 and look for them, because we don't have that, and I think maybe EMS statistics can give you much better records on that, but our numbers do not even come close to showing the, the nature of the problem.
Right. Well, first of all, thank you for your service, and I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you for what you're doing, because I, I believe that that's the only way that we're going to fix this. We're not gonna fix this by responding out there, giving them Narcan and reviving them, because nine times out of 10, they'll be calling 911 again in less than 24 to 48 hours needing Narcan, and I've seen it personally, three times within 36 hours. So, it's a repeat, it's a repeat situation that's got to be stopped by a quick response team, or in some cases, by someone on the scene at the exact time those paramedics are there to stop it, but our numbers are not even close to what the actual problem is, because so often it's unconscious, unresponsive, not breathing, heart attack, seizures, you name it, and then the paramedics get there and they find a crap pipe, or they find residue there, and they know it's something else. So, the, the statistics are very, very inaccurate.
Right. So, one opportunity maybe for, for data sharing, just as you're talking about this and thinking about this, we'll certainly keep you updated. If we have something to brag about where we get this grant, you will be the first to know about it. Um, but that might be potential that, not just with EMS services, but with, um, hospitals in, in Cavill, in Logan, Kanala, maybe even in Boone, like, depending on what part of the county an overdose occurs in, right, and where an empty hospital bed is, those might, those emergency rooms might want to be able to provide, like, "Oh, this is a Lincoln County resident that had, that had an overdose."
I'd say less than half the people even go to the hospital anymore, and once they come through and you give them a miracle drug, they can refuse, refuse to go, and that's what happens with most. But I would like, if you all could follow up with our office.
Yeah.
I would like to take our numbers that are showing the overdoses and what you see as realistic.
Right.
And comparing what the percentages of differences are, because I know it's substantial. I just can't put my finger on what it actually is.
I'd love to do that.
So, what is the number that you got? Just out of curiosity.
I don't wanna tell you, but I would tell you it wasn't very high.
Wasn't very high.
I mean, if you're trying to protect your son, you're trying to protect your daughter, you're trying to protect your.
Right. The fear of law enforcement.
You don't call and say, "Hey, somebody just overdosed."
Right.[1636.83]
Or if you yourself were using two, right, so you don't want to.
And that's the case. I've seen mother and daughter overdoses together, I've seen husband and wife overdoses together.
Just the fear of consequences, police showing up.
It's probably not like EMS or radio back in the nine-one-ones, saying, yeah, we use Narcan, we got here. They don't tell you what happens.
I mean, once their dispatch and the call plate is signed to them, we never actually see the difference.
Do you typically partner with a healthcare facility for a quick response team?
So, that's a good question. So because we're, we're going out, like, after an overdose has already occurred, the medical professional on the team is a Health Department professional, so it's a, it's an emergency medical technician. The reason that that team is coupled the way it is is the law enforcement officer provides a degree of safety to the team, right? The EMT is there to respond to any, like, medical emergency that you happen into when you knock on the door, because that's also a possibility, as you were saying, that the twenty-four, thirty-six hours over an overdose might be a time where people are likely to overdose again. And then the recovery coach is there because there are things that Ellie could say to somebody, and I could say, and we could say the same words, and they're going to mean a lot more coming from somebody who, like, you know, understands where you are. And you can see, like, wow, I can get better, you know, it could be better for me, so. If there aren't any more questions at this point, I might turn it over to Tyler to talk a little bit more about Fresh Start, because that's a really exciting opportunity, like we're talking about, to catch people on the front end. It's a program that even more so can engage people who don't yet have a criminal record.
So you have applied for the grant?
Yes, it's all sent off. So I think it's at the state level. Like, we're really lucky that Ellie connected us to Sam because it was only through Health Departments. So I think it was the Bureau of Behavioral Health with DHR is the source of the grant.
When did you know about the award?
It was due Halloween. I would be surprised if we heard about it by the end of the month, but most grant awards start, like, December one, January one, yeah. And we certainly, now we have one, like, typed and ready to go. And quick response teams are, the grants come out very often because they're an innovative, like, collaborative type of, like, grantees love that stuff, they're about it, yeah.
Now, in Logan, you said a deputy was actually a member of this quick response team. Do you know how many hours they average?
So in Logan, the grant was written, so I can talk a little bit more about this. We'd have to adapt the model to Lincoln, right? Because the total grant amount that was requested was just a little bit smaller based on this particular grant that we could apply for, right? So the cap was a little bit lower. In Logan, what they do is they go out every Monday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, and Friday afternoon, right? So every member of the team that goes out for those hours bills the grant, as opposed to their employer, for that time, if that makes sense. So the Health Department in Logan holds the grant, they're the one that applied for it. Steve Browning is the, the member of the Health Department who, like, holds medical training, and so he goes out with the team. And so he bills, like, those hours, not into the Health Department's budget, but into the grant. And the Sheriff's Department and Day Report are both reimbursed for their employees' hours based on the number of hours that they go out with the quick response team. So for, for Logan, it's fifteen hours a week, right, because they go out three after-a-days a week. Sometimes it's more. And because, like, let's say we're lucky enough to engage somebody and somebody is interested in coming into treatment, they might have three more stops to make that afternoon. So they might find a way to get that person to day report so that somebody can sit with them and try and find them a treatment bed or talk through different options with them. The way that that grant is written, that employee now also is part of the quick response team. Like, that warm handoff can facilitate more treatment, and so that's another, like, source of, of income for county departments, right?
So just going off what she said, the Fresh Start program is fairly, it's been around for about two years now. And it's about eight months in duration, when a client comes in and a participant starts, it's about eight months, start to finish. There's eight hundred combined hours of total completion that they have to achieve. There's three phases to the program, phase one, phase two, and phase three. In phase one, the client kind of builds a foundation with me and Ellie, of course. They kind of concentrate on what they want to go doing forward with case management. We get their driver's license taken care of, living situation, all that taken care of in phase one. Because going forward, they have to have a foundation before they can build upon anything. In phase two, the main thing that we concentrate on in Fresh Start is obtaining a mentor from within the community. More times than not, a client gets in treatment, they get through treatment, then all of a sudden they're like, wow, it's time for me to get back into the community, find a job, start communicating with peers, and it's hard, that's a big obstacle for them. So we found through Fresh Start, doing that in phase two, already gets the ball rolling and gets them back in the community at a much earlier date. Another thing I've noticed too is, like, so hard to find jobs for people with a criminal history. It's almost like an us versus them mindset. And usually I've noticed if a mentor's a business owner and our client spends X amount of time with that business owner, they realize he works just like anybody else, this client goes above and beyond, because usually they're my hardest workers. People with a criminal history, people that's been turned down by numerous jobs, they work their butt off. And that's another idea with mentorships, what we do. Going into phase three, we kind of wing them off the system, we kind of make them, like J L said, drug screen less, we make them do treatment less, we kind of make sure that they are concrete and ready to graduate.
Now, do you operate this Fresh Start through the day report?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it sounds like it's a lot of the same.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a Fresh Start program in Lincoln, Logan, and Mingo, and a big part of the Fresh Start program is gardening, gardening and craftsmanship.
So if somebody's in the drug court.
Yes, ma'am.
They could just, that's how they would?
They could do both programs simultaneously.
They do both. So they're still getting all the classes and all, all the things that they would get through normal drug court program, but they would do the extra stuff with the Fresh Start also.
And more, like, Fresh Start concentrates on is reincorporating them in the community, getting them, like, the Cafe Appalachia project, that's huge, man. That's something that's kind of rare, they don't get that opportunity very often. And the gardening is something else that we really pride ourselves on. So within this year alone, we've donated almost three thousand pounds of vegetables to food pantries and local people in need. And that's something I really pride, pride in the Fresh Start program. I really want to get to a point where each county specializes on one thing. So like, right now in Logan, we got a chicken coop with eighty-some chickens, and we're donating eggs every week. And Ellie wants to do something special down here with the Cafe Appalachia, which I'm happy for that. I know you're happy to get started on that, too. We just recently graduated six more graduates, that's eight graduates altogether. Every one of our graduates are working, driver's license back, a really good living environment, that's the main thing. If they go right back to a horrible environment, they're not going to last, it's not going to be successful. And is there anything I should add up for Australia?
Folks can come in without a criminal record right off the street.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's something that QRT's been a big help in Logan with, is the QRT guy, John, the recovery coach, in our office. I'll work hand in hand with him to say, hey, man, when you go out and speak with these people, they can come in and get treatment off the street. They don't have to have any felony convictions or any criminal convictions, they can literally come in and start treatment now. Once they get a mental health assessment done, we look at a schedule, they can begin treatment. It's huge.
Can you give me potential sites for this potential Cafe Appalachia?
Well, we have a list of ideas.
Got a list of ideas.
And we are open to suggestions for sure.
You have any suggestions, we are greatly taken.
Have you got this lined out or ready for this, or are you just?
This is going to be really funny. This was a pike during the month for Fresh Start to end. And I never in a million years thought it would be circling this class to be like, okay, we're going to be planning this, and then here, within, what, two years, we want one open. And I was like, never, ever thought it would roll that fast.
So, yeah, so the, the boundaries that we're working within, right, is that, so the southwestern regional day report, our fiscal agent for all state or federal grants is the Logan County Commission, right? Like, that was the, that was the original site for the southwestern region, and so kind of like all roads lead through Logan and then out to the other counties, just in terms of state funding. So we're really lucky to have the West Virginia Food and Farm Coalition, who were the ones that, like, emailed in the grant. So they're holding the money and then will transfer it to us. It would be very improper for us to, like, sign a rental agreement in Lincoln County, because then we're just waiting for somebody to be like, well, why is no one getting, like, own property in Lincoln County? Like, that would just not be ideal. So, so this is really lucky that, like, potentially the West Virginia Food and Farm Coalition would hold a rental agreement here, or even Cafe Appalachia, if they wanted to franchise, and then we could operate it. So that's, like, logistically how we're thinking about it, but with those different avenues, if one of those were to work out, that gives us a pretty wide latitude, right? We would love it to work in, like, Hamlin proper, so that folks could get there on the bus line, like, kids could utilize that as, like, a study and space. It would be really exciting to have a community space that people could enjoy, right, where there could be, like, fun, positives, sober, community-oriented things that people could do, so.
I've been to one in South Charleston, and it's impressive.
Yeah, any more questions?
Coffee development, we're doing something similar downtown, well, not, not similar, but the concept sounds not a hundred million miles away.
Yes.
Is there any chance they could dovetail, or?
Definitely, so, so Refresh Appalachia is a, is like a subset of, um, yeah, so they're, they are already a partner with Fresh Start.
And while they weren't written into the grant, it is just not a wild conclusion to draw that they would be involved in any of this.
Specifically if they already had some facility that would work for our purposes and whatnot, like, that's, that's definitely.
That's the thing they do, I mean, it's, they own the Henson Billy, right, it's like that, downtown Hamlin.
They're working on it, right, no?
And they've been discussing different ideas, and there's, I mean, it's just put up against the wall, which one ever sticks, but, it sounds like if, I mean, again, they've had a slew of ideas about this place. That seems like it would be a good partnership, because it is a little bit.
Thank you. I was thinking, wow, I wonder if they know this.
No, I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, they're growing out of Business Park as well. This, this, their first year doing that, I mean, they're, they're out there, they've been growing at the hospitals, I mean, it's a good, seems like it would be good synergy, so.
Also want to add that any hour that a client obtains in the garden, that they actually get college credit hours for those. So I just had two graduates graduate with over ten hours of just college credit from the garden alone.
Send me your good news.
Will do. Well, thank you all.
Thank you for commenting. You may and through hearts, we would.
Yes, impressive.
So if you couldn't tell by my accent, I am not from Southern West Virginia, but Southern West Virginian by choice. I still have California plates on my Subaru, and I was very afraid. My tire pressure gauge was popping off, I just, I didn't know what to do. I got stuck behind a train, it was a big deal.
Something happened, we have plenty of guys with wrecker service.
Yeah, all the wreckers work here.
We have a lot of folks in our area that are really working hard on, on all these different things. And I'll tell you all the same thing I told Boone Kelly's Commission, whatever we did to get her to come here from California, somebody's living right. She's really good at what she does, and I mean, if you need a number crunch, let her know, she's your girl.
Like J L said, we'll try and come back about every other month. It's my dream that, like, we are more accountable to you, right? Because you talk to, like, residents of Lincoln County much more than I do. Ellie has us all beat, but like, you know what I mean? And so, like, we want to make sure that the things that we're prioritizing and the things that we are centering in discussions, like, with other leaders kind of around the region are in line with things that you want to see.
Thank you guys, we appreciate it. You all have a good evening. Get Ricky a headband for Saturday.
We've got him. Oh, my gosh.
See you, sir.
Like separating pebbles each other.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion concerns of plus five, and we have wrecker service.
I would just, I mean, a couple things. I would just say that, you know, obviously, we've got some input, there's some good discussion. I think we've got a little bit of work to do on the draft, because of some of the suggestions that were made and the conversations that occurred. So I don't know if this requires a motion, but what I would recommend is that we, you know, take some of the suggestions, put them into the draft, into official documents to discuss at the next meeting, and then take potential action on them.
I don't think we need a motion without doing anything. Table at the next meeting, and then we'll. Okay, we don't have anything unfinished business? Then I'll need a motion to approve the new business. I'll second that, all in favor of I.
How much is the increment paid? What to be? How much is the increment paid? Because it's always been.
I think we're crunching the numbers.
Okay.
We've got two different numbers, we're like an item, we're going to see what's on our last eight fours at this point. What were you going to say, that it's always been what? Because it's not always been, it's been different all over the place.
No, it's always been said, though.
Oh, wow, I thought you meant, okay.
It's usually part of the, well, it's usually part of the record of the meeting, I would think. So, okay.
Has it been part of the record?
It's always been five hundred, thousand, or whatever, I mean, I've, I've.
No, one year it was three, one year it was three. Last year we didn't get any, then a year before it was three. Then there was a year that they were different amount.
Oh, yeah.
Tom here.
Okay.
We'll say five would be the most.
Okay, so that'll never be publicized, it doesn't ever be made public?
I don't know.
Okay, okay. I'm just asking.
I'm not sure it has been public, has it? I mean, I'm sure it's on the vendor, I mean, it'll be somewhere, but I don't know if it's been in the meeting.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm asking, has it? I don't remember.
No, I, there have been years where there's been an amount on the agenda.
Yeah, I bet there's been an amount.
So that's the only reason I'm asking, I mean, that's, that's, that's the only reason I'm asking, I, I don't have a doc in the office.
So what about one dollar and five hundred?
Huh? Between one dollar and five hundred?
One, one hundred, five hundred, probably, I mean, we have.
When you say increment check, is it, is it a one-time payment, or is it?
It's a one-time. It's a one-time payment.
It's a one-time payment?
Yes.
So they stay on their pay rate? Their, their rate of pay doesn't change from one year to the next?
It's a separate check.
They get a one-time, not a bonus?
Correct.
Right, okay. No, that just, that confuses me every time, okay.
And all state employees, it, once they've worked, next amount of years gets, they get an increment check, but it's general.
Okay, that's cool. Why the word increment, though? Is it, I mean, is it, I don't, increments? I, well, it's just one-time check. Increment suggests that there's going to be more of them, or, or, I guess it's from one year to the next, I guess?
Increment's based on how long they've worked.
How long they've worked here, okay.
I think they called it increment to start with, because it was different to my own.
Right, okay, okay.
Maybe we should have called it.
Not a bonus?
No, not a bonus, because it's not a bonus, it's not a Christmas bonus.
I'm just, I'm just.
Okay, we've approved the new business. Well, she has everything after all this, does she have anything possibly left to say?
Not for me.
Okay, if nothing else, then I need a motion to adjourn until Thursday, November twenty-first, and that was at ten a.m. That's the day of our.
I've got something for you.
Okay.
It's over there in that garbage bag.
Oh, yes, we about forgot something. This is big, I'm about to find it.
Not a check?
Alan, how could you not just forget this?
I just got so excited with the previous meeting, it was kind of. Need help holding up, I'm going to pick chips. I had to get it out of here, I had to do special work to keep it dry, because of the rain. It truly is here. I will give this to you all.
Wait, stand down there. You've done this before, don't I, like, I haven't done this before?
Josh, you can sign this check.
Was it me?
Don't put it up over my face.
Well, if it was so short, we would have been crawling.
Three, two, one.
And we know what that's for, right, Sean?
Gee, I have no clue.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome. One quick word on this, the environmental phase one report was completed yesterday, and the FAA report was completed yesterday, which says there are no aviation obstructions and no problems with it. So I will most likely release a purchase order tomorrow to start the environmental work and start the site construction.
All right.
And then we will be waiting on the tower design work to see whether we have to go thirty feet or forty feet or whatever it takes into the ground with the, with the case on foundation. It's moving. Moving adjournments.
I'll second that. We're adjourned until twenty-first at ten.